Calling the Foxborough School Committee meeting to order. Tonight being December 2nd, 7 o'clock. Foxborough High School Media Center. This is the agenda for this evening. 7 o'clock, visitors. 7:10, approval of minutes. 7:15, teaching and learning highlights. Readers/writers workshop, grades 5 through 6. 7:30, approval of Foxborough High School overnight travel. 7:35, school improvement plans. The Foxborough High School with Ms. Diana Myers-Pacla. And the Ahern Middle School, Ms. Sue Abrams, principal. 8:15, FPS technology plan update. 8:25, educator evaluation update, Ms. Finelli. 8:35, overnight parking on school property in winter, Ms. Finelli. 8:40, other matters. We will not be going into executive session. So, I'd like to start. Please come forward, state your name. Welcome.
Hello, my name's Joe Garrity. I'm a student at Foxborough High School. And I just wanted to let the committee know that they're starting to do, through the food service program, they're starting to do, right now, they're letting the teachers bring home big pizza pies. Like say if you were at Papagino's, then they're gonna start doing it for the students next week. Then they do individual slices in the new pizza oven. They're doing this because of the new pizza oven. Then they're gonna be doing, then Mrs. Johnson's trying to work with custodial staff about staying after, about not cleaning right after school because they're gonna have to think about that. Smoothies and pretzels after school.
So this is changing? This is something new that they're?
Yeah.
So this is, so this is a follow-up? Which, do you get this update from Ms. Johnson? Is that why he waited?
Well, I saw the pizza thing in all the classrooms. While ordering pizza, I just saw it in all the classrooms.
So partly, this is what Mr. Yupner, Ms. Johnson, were talking about? Where we're gonna try to offer food right after school for Foxborough High School students so that they can, they have an event or athletics to say after they can get something to eat, right?
Yep.
Thank you for letting us know that. That's a great idea.
Good. Thanks, Joe.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other visitors? Seeing none, we're going to go on to approval of minutes. And we're looking at November 18th, our regular meeting minutes. Do I have a, any changes?
I have no changes.
Anyone else?
May I just, to the other, I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
You go ahead.
Just to the other matters, I just wanted to add a sentence regarding the work that you're doing for the Racino mitigation. And so, I mentioned in the meeting that I would like as soon as possible and as necessary, this item to go on an agenda in the future.
Okay.
If necessary.
As soon as possible and as necessary. As necessary, yep. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. So, as necess, are you seeing those like a direct quote that you said? Or is this just kind of the general?
Well, it was just a request that I made during the remarks.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any, any feedback about that? Okay. So, so that would be, how would the sentence read? Just for Janet.
I think the sentence could read, "Mr. Yudin also asked that the matter be added to the agenda as soon as possible and as necessary."
And as necessary, okay. So, okay. Just, I don't mean to split here about semantics here, but, okay. So you're saying that you said, okay, you want it on the agenda and then, because what I remember is that the committee had asked me to find out more information about it and bring it back, bring the information back to all of you. And then we would decide whether we were gonna put it on the agenda. Is that, is that right? Or is that what other people's recol, is that what you're saying, Steve, basically? Or is there something different? I'm just kinda looking for feedback from...
Will there, I guess the question is, will there be a public report on what you've found in the fractured communication and how?
Oh, okay. So, well, I think what, my understanding was, I was gonna get information from the chairman of the Selectmen.
Yeah.
Bring it back to the committee.
Yep.
That information. And then from there, the committee would decide whether we wanted to put it formally on the agenda. I did not feel that the direction given to me was that it was going to be an agenda item. It was gonna be more, I was gonna report back to you and then you would, we would all decide collaboratively whether we wanted it to be an agenda item. No?
If, if that's how we would like to amend it, I am amenable to amending it that way. How's that?
Is that how others?
So I could change, I could change the sentence to, "Mr. Yudin also asked," let me see, let me compose here.
That it become an agenda item if necessary.
If necessary and...
If the committee?
If necessary.
If necessary and in what, agreement with consensus of the board?
Yeah, I guess so.
That was my recollection of it.
Yeah, yes, yes.
So, Mr. Yudin asked about mitigation relative to Racino and Plainville? And whether that should be added to, added as an agenda item in the future?
If necessary.
If, with committee consensus or something?
Yeah. Because I think I said we'd, I'd bring it back to all of you and then we could decide together.
Then who, then who composes the amended sentence? If you folks wanna compose it?
I'm gonna see if I, I'm gonna try.
We compose it and as long as it's in the public.
Since I've been listening.
Mr. Yudin asked about mitigation relative to the Racino and Plainville and inquired, how's that? Whether or not this should be added to the school committee agenda in the future.
Okay, sure.
After discussion, Ms. Deere agreed to contact the Board of Selectmen regarding information to bring back to the school committee this matter. And the committee will decide by consensus whether it should be an agenda item.
I'm agreeable to that.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Devin.
Decide.
I'm sorry, I have one more thing.
No.
Since we're being wordsmithy, and I'm sorry, but I think we should actually include the word "proposed" before Racino in the minute, since we're discussing it.
Agreed.
Because it isn't a done deal. It is a proposed mitigation.
Yes, thank you. Do you want me to? Janet, how's that?
Proposed Racino.
Oh, proposed, proposed Racino.
Okay.
Would you like one more read? Would that make everybody feel better?
Yes, please. It's almost an agenda item already.
Janet, this is a two-tag team match here. Let's see. "Mr. Yudin asked about mitigation relative to the proposed Racino and Plainville and inquired whether or not this should be a school committee agenda item in the future." Ms. Deere, after discussion, Ms. Deere agreed to contact the Board of Selectmen regarding information to bring back to the school committee this matter. And the committee will decide by consensus whether to make this an agenda item.
Well, then, I would call them mitigation timelines. Because that was the genesis of my frustration, right? It was fractured timelines.
About mitigation timelines?
And unclear timelines, yeah.
Mitigation timelines. Relative to the proposed.
All right.
Yeah, that's fine with me. Well, I need a motion. And we can all agree or disagree. Motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
4-0.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for doing my homework, Mrs. Superintendent. I appreciate it.
No, I can scribble with the best of them. Whether, whether we both have the same thing tomorrow will be a different question. I think we will.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's move on to teaching and learning highlights.
Yes. Very exciting teaching and learning highlight, not that they all aren't. So I would like to invite Colin Vogelgesang, who's a grade 5 teacher, Gloria Leehan, grade 6 teacher, and Sue Forrest, who's a middle school literacy specialist, up to the guest table. And they are gonna be talking about their latest literacy initiative at the Ahern Middle School. I see Ms. Abrams here. I'm sure she'll pop up and add anything she might want at the end. But this is about teachers and the great things that they're doing with their students. So I believe they have a little treat video for you. And then they're gonna explain what it is. So I'm just gonna turn it over to you three and tell us whatever you'd like to tell us about the readers/writers workshop model.
Sounds great, thanks. So, over the course of the last few months, we have put into implementation in grades 5 and 6 in the ELA classrooms, the reading/writing workshop model. But it didn't come out of the blue. It came from really listening to a desire among the teachers for wanting better for students. And from my perspective, having sort of the bird's eye view over the different grade levels, what I'm hearing teachers say is, and what I'm seeing is, good things happening in the classroom. So, components of the model that I'll describe briefly to you have been in place. But with the onset of the shift to the Common Core State Standards, which are, you know, quite cumbersome. And all of the things that our teachers try to do and really endeavor to do daily for the betterment of students in their learning. We needed some way of getting our arms around all of that so that the students really did benefit and we could see the difference in student achievement. And so, listening to teachers say, "I wish I had more time, face time with students. I wish I had more time to give them the feedback that I know is essential. And I wanna make the most out of my instructional blocks." And putting all of that together, really what we came up with was looking at this readers/writers workshop model. And the beauty of the model, and I would say with my history professionally here in Foxborough, I can say that what we don't do is subscribe to fads. That we always really try to consult what the research says. And the readers/writers workshop model really is grounded in decades of research and practice. It's tried and true. And all of the bodies of research that we look at, all are mutually supportive. So we've gone forth with this with confidence. So, let me just give you a quick little background on where we've been. So last, last year, we started talking about it, I would say informally, early on in our content meetings routinely. And with the support of Mrs. Abrams, we were able to engage in layers of professional development. We had a chance to attend conferences, to hear Nancy Atwell herself, who's one of the gurus in readers/writers workshop. We got to hear her speak and come back as a team and reflect upon that. We've had a chance to do site visits to a classroom in Milford where this practice has been going on. And the classroom instructor there has really been working with us quite a bit. And turns out, she actually taught the graduate course that several of our teachers took here onsite this past summer. So those layers have been in place. And then with the embedded professional development, collegial and in my role working with teachers, and what Sue Abrams has allowed us to do, have really helped us launch this initiative in a way that has left me in awe, really of the teachers and the fine work that they're doing. So I'll quickly describe the model so that you understand that. It's, it's just best teaching practice. And while we describe it in the ELA classroom, it's good no matter what you teach or where you're teaching. So each lesson starts with a mini lesson. And that sort of answers the piece where teachers are saying, "I want kids to have more time." So if we really focus our instruction and keep those lessons truly mini so that the kids understand with clarity what the goal is, what the objectives for the lesson are, we've got more time within that instructional block to engage them, gradually releasing that responsibility to them, making sure they're gaining control of the concepts or the strategies that we're trying to teach. To the point where they, we then send them off independently. So we start with the mini lesson, and then we have the do with the teacher bit. You know, and peers working together. And then when it's time, the kids go off independently. And they are practicing the strategies. And it's at that point where there's this optimization of the independent practice time, where the teacher really can get up close with students. And that's where they can really notice, what are the readers doing? What are the writers doing? And what does each student individually need? And I know that both Colin and Gloria will talk specifically about what that looks like in the classroom. But we know for sure that when students get timely feedback frequently, that that's where they can make those adjustments as learners. And that's where we expect to see the greatest gains. So we're really excited about all of that. Well, I wanna talk a little bit about where we've been and why we made the shift. You know, we've talked about differentiation of instruction. And that is vitally important. And through our support models, whether we've had special education support, reading support, or other support in the classrooms, that's helped us to meet the needs certainly of all of our learners. And over the last several years, we've tried what we've sort of termed the flex model, which is just a nickname for flexibly grouping using all of the support staff that we have. And that really has helped our, our learners make gains. It's helped us to address the different standards at the points where students are. But we know even within the ELA classroom, even if there weren't any support in place, that differentiation can happen for students. And it's with this readers/writers workshop model that I think our teachers here would agree that it really more naturally happens. So when we send them off to work independently, that's when the teacher can confer with students and give them that one-on-one about the reading and the writing. Or that's where they can see students in a small group. And again, when you add to that the supports that come into the classrooms, I think you're just gonna get the most bang for your buck. So it's really been an exciting, I would say, half-year or so. But just in the last few months, since the students have crossed the threshold in grades 5 and 6, we've been pretty excited about the things that are happening there. So I'm gonna turn it over here. I know Gloria's gonna talk a little bit in a minute. We're gonna take a second and watch a video clip. And then Gloria's gonna talk a little bit about the mini lesson piece. And then Colin's gonna talk about the role of conferring with students and how they each see that as having made a difference already for their students. So in this video clip, it's just about two minutes long. What we've tried to do is capture the essence, snippets of different workshops, readers workshop, writers workshop, where you'll see an instance of a mini lesson where the teacher has the students up close and gathered round. And then you'll see lots of independent practice. And sometimes you'll see a teacher, it's actually Colin here, who's meeting one-on-one with a student. And other times, you'll see teachers conferring with students, but as they gather round their natural group where they're working anyway. The beauty of this, as you look at the snippets, is it captures, some of these snippets really capture student work. And one of the biggest pieces that we've taken away from this is how vital choice is. And so the student notebooks that we're looking at really show students brainstorming of the things that are near and dear to their hearts, the things that matter most. Because without that motivation, without that choice, we're really gonna diminish the amount of learning that students are interested in doing. And I think that'll come forth in the video. So, I mean, that barely captures all of the really great work that's going on. But hopefully, it gives you a little sense that we've got teachers with a clear focus on their objectives. And certainly, there hasn't been an absence of that. But the structure itself really does allow us to, while we take on the cumbersome standards, it allows us to slow down what we're doing so that we're more clear to students, so that they have ease with hitting that instructional target a lot better. So with that, I'll turn it over to Gloria. She's gonna talk a little bit about the mini lesson.
Yeah, and it is a perfect segue to the mini lesson. Because when you're teaching, and with such huge standards that we have to deal with and try so much we need to teach our students, it's easy to sometimes throw too much out there on the table for them. And as a result, it's ambiguous whether or not they're gonna get any of it. Because their minds are all over the place trying to pull it all together. The beauty of the mini workshop is that you're forced by the structure of it to really narrow down, again, the word "focus" comes into play here, the real point of that particular lesson that you want to convey to the students and help them to become adept at. And so, it's twofold. You've got the mini lesson. You have it very well structured and planned out. You have your students up close. It gets very close and personal. They have frequent opportunities to, you know, quickly interact with each other to, you know, incorporate that social aspect of learning. And you've got it narrowed down to such a small point. And you're using fabulous, real literature, you know, real texts that, you know, you're using to make your point with and for modeling for them. And then so that when they get up and go away, and then they are then working with their self-selected texts that they're reading, or their self-selected stories that they're writing, or whatever it, you know, whether it's reading or writing workshop, they go back with one new piece of learning in mind. And then it's much easier for them than to incorporate that new piece of learning, you know, organically and, you know, for the most degree, pretty quickly, you know, take in that new knowledge and apply it to what they're doing, whether it's with their reading or with their writing. And I love it. And I do see a, like a new sense, renewed sense of my own teaching even. So I come to it with a little bit more enthusiastic. As a 6th grade teacher, the kids are, you know, slowly moving away from that, that young child where, you know, little kids spend more time up close to their teachers. And it sort of brought that part back to it, to my own teaching, which, you know, I find that I love. So it's, it's been good. Good for me, good for the students.
And I think to Gloria's point, when she talks about the students just taking away that one teaching point, the beauty of this structure is, the student will take it away, but they own that strategy. That's not to say it won't be revisited and reinforced. But some students may go back then and apply that strategy at that point. But others may not quite be ready for it. And where we had talked about choice, the workshop structure allows students to work to the degree to which they're ready. So some students may have whipped out an entire narrative, or maybe working on an informational piece. Some may be in the research phase. And others might be really just working on developing their leads. And so that's okay. Because they can continue to cycle through pieces of writing. Because again, the goal is, we want them to have practice with volumes to really develop those skills. So they take that strategy, the reading or the writing strategy away, and they hold on to it in their readers notebook or their writers notebook. And they can go back and sort of consult that mini lesson at any point. It's documented for them in one way or another, so they can draw upon it. And that's part of our goal toward getting them to be more independent as well.
Yeah, and I think, sort of, what Sue was just touching on, and Gloria as well, is the sort of ongoing conversation that you can have about what a child might be reading or writing. I think that's, to me, that's the, the best part. Because, you know, although we've tried for a long time to really differentiate instruction, I feel like now it really makes so much sense when you do it in this model. Every child, individual, is getting, you know, exactly what they need. You know, you sit down one-on-one, you look at what they're, they're reading, what they're writing. You give them some feedback, you ask them some questions. You have a conversation, you know? And I think that when I first heard those terms "workshop," I'm thinking, it's gotta be collaboration. It's gotta be conversation. And it really has been. And so you're meeting each kid at their level and then providing them with some steps to take it to the next level. And you're, you're giving them sort of an opportunity to sit down and really kind of hash it out and together sort of conjure up these small achievable goals. And you say, you know, "When we meet next time, I wanna see what kind of progress you're making in this area and that area." And it sort of holds them accountable. And they, they're getting the choice, you know, I think, as Sue and Gloria mentioned, that they're, they're choosing what they wanna read, and they're choosing what they wanna write about. And they're sort of bought into it. And so the conversations become much more student-centered, much more collaborative as opposed to, "I'm the teacher, I'm gonna tell you what to do." It's sort of, what can we do to make this piece a bit stronger? What can I do to help you with your reading and sort of own what you learned in that mini lesson that we just did? So I find that the students are getting a lot more out of it. They're getting more time to take what you've taught them, take what you've talked about in your conversations, and apply it with, with the free time that they have to work on what they wanna be writing about, what they wanna be reading about. So it's been tremendous this year. And it's, obviously, it's one of those things that will get easier in time as well. But the, the work that Sue has done and the resources that Sue Abrams has provided has really been helpful to sort of jumpstart this.
Yeah, very helpful. And like you said, the kids buy into it so well. But one of the things I love too with the conferencing is that when you're whole class and you, you know, throw out a question to the class, and the hands go up. And you can only call on like that one or two children at a time, and then the lesson moves on. So that you miss a lot of the thinking that's going on behind the kids, whether it's their comprehension of what they're reading, or it's what they're trying to convey in their writing. And I find, especially with the writing, that when you can talk to them about it one-on-one and they see the level of interest you have in what they're doing, and that you're really working with them and what they're trying to do, and you're better understanding what they're trying to do, then the story or the writing, whatever it is, just evolves better. And, and the kid is more interested, the child's more interested in what they're writing. Because, because of that vested interest in them as a person and not just throwing out the classroom question, you know, we used to do.
Right. And you can tell that they're excited. They're excited about what they're producing. They wanna meet with you, you know? You know, "Isn't this our day to sit down?" Absolutely, you know? And I think that, that's something that was sort of maybe lacking in the past. At least I felt that it was sort of, you know, you assign something, the kid works on it. And, you know, you give them a little bit of feedback, and it just sort of, you know, evaporates into the, into the abyss. But here, it's such an ongoing, it's the, it's the process. It's the, you know, we're working through it. We're learning skills that you're gonna apply forever. And, and it's been great.
So it's like the review ti, like, the review time would have been when you received the paper and you made a grade on it. You gave them a grade. And then you would give it back to them, I'm sure, with comments on it.
Right.
But, you know, and unless maybe the child was, the learner was not doing well, you'd probably give them maybe more comments, or maybe you'd spend more time with them. But this, you're really able to give each child, each learner, specific attention.
And oftentimes, you can catch it before a mistake has been made. So they don't have to go through that, "Oh, I made the mistake" part of it. They get the idea because of their opportunity to be able to orally explain what they're trying to do. And then you, they can work it through before, you know, some of the writing even gets down on paper. So they don't even have to go through the nick. I mean, not, you know, of course, there's, you know, constructive comments that go on. But sometimes it just, you know, works beautifully. And then there's the pride of what they've accomplished without going through that little negative part, you know, where they, it didn't work out.
Are all the teachers doing this? Are all the ELA?
5th and 6th grade, yes. They are. And I think, you know, all the points are wonderful. I personally love this model. It's not new. Like Sue said, it's not a fad. But it's something that they chose to revisit as, what's best practice? And what do we need to do more of that we know is good practice? And how can we all do it together? But I think that what they're saying in a lot of words is, reading and writing is so personal. You know, when you're reading, it's your interpretation, your construction of the meaning of that author's words. And there's lots of different interpretations. There's no one right one. And then when you're writing, you're really trying to get your personal ideas across to somebody else who's gonna be the reader. So it's such a, reading and writing is such a personal act that this, this workshop model puts that personalization back in.
Right.
Throughout the whole stage. Where they're not just reading something and answering questions that everybody's reading. And that, you know, that, or that everybody's answering in kind of the same way. And it does allow the teachers to continue to teach while their, their thoughts, whether they're reading or writing are under construction still. So it really just takes that whole personalization of interpretation of text and writing right, right back to the instructional process where they have the most power to intervene with skills and strategies, or just a new way of thinking about reading or writing. So I think it's wonderful.
I think the, the highlight for me is that I've noticed that kids feel more successful. And, you know, that there'll, there'll still be kids that struggle with writing, or maybe that don't enjoy writing as much as others. But when you, when you give them enough time to write, when you give them, you know, small tasks like, "This is what I want you to do," or, "Here's what you could work on." Everyone can be successful with, you know, achieving that one or those two goals and not feel overwhelmed by, "I need to remember these 55 things when I do this writing piece." It's, "I'm gonna do this one thing right, and I'm gonna work on this, and then I'm gonna do this. And I'm gonna have lots of time to practice, and I'm gonna have lots of feedback, both with my teacher and my peers."
And choice. I mean, they're choosing their topics, and they're choosing their books that they're reading. And, you know, part of the whole process is guiding them to a good level for them to be working on independently.
good level for them to be working on independently, but it's, I, it's wonderful, I mean, you worry that the management's gonna be hard, because you are working with individual students, so what's everybody else gonna be doing, but they're engaged, you know, they, they pick their book, they want to read their book, they picked their topic for their writing, you know, their, part of their heart and soul is going into it, so they're much more engaged than in the past, so.
And if I can just say too, that this, you know, as fifth and sixth grade teachers, they really have embraced this in a sweeping fashion, unless they're really behaving for me, and I don't believe, I know them, so they don't feel compelled to behave for me, but they, they truly all have, and I've heard nothing but positive comments, and I think that's very telling, because we know the demands of instruction today. But it, it's especially challenging for them at the middle school, because they don't have a self-contained classroom, they don't have one group of 20 students or 25 students, they have two groups of 20 or 22 students, and so the load is double, and their time constraints are a little bit more constricted, and yet they go forth, and so our going forth together is continually trying to identify what are the factors that sort of inhibit the progress, both instructionally and from the student's point of view, and how can we prioritize and problem solve for those to optimize it, given some of the limitations that we do have.
Tina, did you?
Well, yeah, I just, I think it's fabulous, I have a sixth grader, as you know, and he, he seems to be enjoying it, I like that a lot of the writing, it takes place in the classroom, and they get that immediate feedback from the teacher, because, yeah, when it's sent home for homework, you know, they either get, are on their own, or their parent is giving them feedback, which is not always received well, at least in my household, but, but from a teacher, it really has so much impact, and you all do such a great job with them, I, I know Sam's doing fantastic with the readers and writers workshops, so just from a firsthand perspective, I think it's great, keep it up.
Sounds like a great program, and we're fortunate we've got the teachers who are so enthusiastic, and I think that definitely gets passed on to the, to the students as well.
And the support from administration, the materials we've been supplied to work with have been just phenomenal, we, we couldn't want for anything.
You may not know Rav Mir, who is not with us in middle school, but he's a very, he's an awesome participant at our meeting, so he's our high school student representative.
I feel like what, like also, like what should be really noticed is how that's gonna help in like the future, for like when they do go to high school and high school, I mean, you don't get to choose what you want to read, you don't get to choose what you have to write, but I feel like them seeing how to write, and knowing that they can put what they want to say into their papers, I feel like going to high school, they'll be probably far better than most of the kids that we have here now, I would just say.
It'll be really interesting to see as the years go by, how that shapes the high school.
We'll be looking at that data definitely, to see the impact that it has, great point.
Excellent.
Thank you so much for coming and sharing with us this evening.
That's awesome.
Yes.
Thanks, you have good work.
Thank you.
The recent PD Day, their discussions in their workshop about this model, and what their mini lesson's gonna be was pretty impressive too, so, thanks, they're doing great work.
Oh, it's very exciting.
I, I just love that they're not afraid to just jump in and all work together, and really be pretty powerful together, they're impressive teams in fifth and sixth grade, I have to say.
Well, you could see it too, from the video, the, the enthusiasm with the students, and they, you know, were all raising their hands, and they, you know, they definitely seem engaged.
Exciting.
All right, we're gonna go on to approval of Foxborough High School overnight travel.
Yes, I'll invite Diana up to our guest microphone, as you can see in the memo, on the, the committee always approves anticipated overnight trips for the 2013-14 school year for Foxborough High School students, and you can see Diana wants to, just for the people watching at home, if, they'll just give a little read-through of what the overnight trips will be, and the committee will see if they have questions.
There are two at the top that you can see that are in need to qualify, and they're always out there each and every year, and that's the cheerleading competition, and again, the cheerleading competition, also too, there is by invitation of submission of our tape for the essentially Ellington, which is the last on the list, but we always do like to put these in, we oftentimes too, will wind up with, and I was just looking at this to see if it was on there, but at times, we do have relays or other track individuals or groups that will also advance, that's not on there at the moment, we'll know further into the seasons whether or not we'll be adding an additional overnight, but the others are our Student Council lock-in, it is an all-nighter that happens, it's at a different high school every year to host, and it'll be at Middleborough this year, of course, our Spanish and our French exchange programs, and the trip to London will be taking place. We also have the MASCE, which is again, a student council, this is the state conference that is held each year, it's held in Hyannis, it's a two night, two and a half day workshop and conference with a thousand students coming to it from across the state.
Diana, can I interrupt you just for one moment?
Sure.
I'm sorry, just before you move on from the trip to London, England, what group sponsors that?
It's actually teachers out of our English department, Shannon Wazaluski is the teacher that has headed that particular program for the past few years.
It's not a cultural trip, they go to theater, they-
And it's theater.
It's Shakespeare, theater.
Okay, it just didn't, it didn't, I think it was, just, didn't say that on the, okay.
But choice.
There's a, a travel company that they use, and it's EF Travel.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. The Student Council conferences, I had mentioned, the All-State Music Festival, and then our music department this year is going in April, and the trip that they have planned is the music festival that will take place in Toronto and Ottawa.
Right. Do we know who the chaperones will be for Spanish or French?
Do we know Karen?
For Spanish, it's Irene Tippes and Christine Snett, and for French, it's Debbie Grant and Kevin Joseph.
Great. I know, and the London, when, when, the teacher was also doing all the drama, it came out of that, and now somebody else is doing the drama here, and, but she still continues it, because it's, it's been very successful.
Yes, I just couldn't remember.
She actually teaches a drama semester course, which-
She does, she teaches the regular course, she just doesn't do the extra curriculum.
She's the co- curricular, I'm sorry.
She doesn't do the co-curricular, but she does do the, she does teach the course.
She had done the co-curricular drama for a while, but hasn't more recently been doing that.
And that's, that's always been successful too, ever since she started it.
So we need a motion then, right?
Yes, motion to approve-
I definitely motion to approve this.
Motion to approve the overnight trips for the 2013-2014 school year.
I'll second Bev's move.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds like some great trips.
Well, you might as well stay right where you are.
Sue, do you want to come up? Okay, we're gonna go move on to the school, school improvement plans.
I didn't know we were doing this as a joint tear.
Last meeting, we had your elementary school improvement plans, and look, isn't that, what a great team, we have Michelle and McCarthy and Mike Stanton here to support their colleagues, since, sort of accidentally, the secondary principals were here last meeting, and so I pretended that was their support, and so I made a joke about them coming back to support, and I guess they took it as serious.
They did.
But look at that, isn't that great?
Including Mr. Regan, who called, who said-
Anyway, thanks for being here for support, we'll see how much they need it, so we have the high school school improvement-
I was just gonna say, Mr. Regan also said that he was going to be here, but unfortunately, he has to attend another school committee in his town tonight for his, for his son, so I said that was quite okay. Our strategic plan is a three-year plan, and it has been a three-year plan from the high school in the recent past, we have three major objectives, but fleshed out under those three major objectives are smaller objectives, and all three of these are rooted in our core values. So I'm just gonna highlight a couple of things, but in our first core value, one of the things that we really pulled out and gleaned out was that at FHS, we will provide challenging and innovative educational experiences that promote academic excellence by meeting the need of students in ways that will engage them in their learning. And the overall objective that is falling under that is that we will continue to offer curriculum and instruction that is rigorous and dynamic, and that promotes high levels of student achievement. Now, within this first objective, this is probably the most lengthy, because each of the departments went through and put in what their specific goals and their specific strategies were, but we also have some overall, and just a couple of, that I'm gonna highlight for you, and to highlight for the public as well. You had the, the report card last week, or the last school committee meeting, or a couple of school committee meetings ago, and we're still going to move along that same line, we have continual goals to make sure that our MCAS scores will stay at the, at the proficient and at the advanced, and that we want to take the, the percentage of students that may be in a failing, or may be in a needs, needs improvement, and continue to move everybody up. We want to continue to see that our SAT scores are gonna, are stay where they are, or again, improve. A personal goal for me, and continues to be, is that every student will have an opportunity to take an advanced placement course while they're here in high school, as preparation for whatever they may do after high school. So those are some of those pieces that are there as a part of the report card, but to flesh out a few things that are kind of some highlights, the big things are, as we continue to move forward, we want to make sure that we are connected, and that we do have the crossroads with the common core in all of our subject areas, along with that comes common assessments, and expanding those beyond midterms and final exams, and moving those into unit tests, making sure that all of our curriculum is written under a common template, that we will also help our students as we transition from MCAS to the PARC testing that is going to be coming eventually down the road, so what can we do, what's going to be in place? Part of that will be the writing of and the working through of SEPA's, SEPA you'll be hearing much more, those are curriculum embedded performance assessments whereby students are actually demonstrating their knowledge, not just being able to give back, you know, rote, but actually being able to demonstrate what they understand, how they understand it, we can measure growth over time with our students. And of course, part of this too, under this particular, as far as the rigor is concerned, is that we are going to continue to work with our NEASK recommendations, and continue to grow our school based in, again, the concepts of NEASK, which are, are very grounded in research for, for decades, you know, that that follows right along. So just a couple of things highlighted under our first one on there, rigor of an instruct- of instruction assessment and curriculum. Our second objective, again, embedded in the core values, is that we want to continue to provide a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment that fosters positive attitudes among students and staff, so, and this is page 11, you bounce up several pages in the, in the, in the plan, with our, our overarching goal is to continue to strengthen school culture, ensuring that student, staff, and all stakeholders here in the building feel valued, safe, and have a voice in what is happening in our programs here. So two major areas are our continuation of our response to intervention, which is really a program to identify, monitor, and provide appropriate interventions for all students in a wide variety of ways, and so for us, that's ongoing professional development for our teachers, of how can they really work with a diverse group of students in their classroom? While we may not be as culturally diverse as some communities, we certainly are emotionally diverse, academically diverse, socially diverse, so it's how do we meet all of those needs of our students as well, how can we identify those students before things start to go downhill too quickly? And also, on the flip side, is to also continue to really highlight the things that our students are doing well, it may not be the A student, but it might be the consistent B student, it might be attendance and, and just improving attendance, homework, whatever it might be, and a part of that is through the student-stronged program and recognition for students, that way, it's little things, but they can certainly mean a lot to our students. And this is the fourth year of our Warrior Huddle, it's a four-year program, because we are, our huddles are based with students in the ninth, the tenth, the eleventh, and the twelfth grade, so the curriculum needed to be a different curriculum for four years, this is the fourth year of this program, so we're gonna be looking for the data, we're gonna be looking for input, we're gonna be looking for us to do a review, what's working well, what do we need to maybe take a look at and do a little bit differently, what do we need to emphasize, what's changed over four years, you know, so maybe our, our focus might be a little bit different in the coming year, so it's always keeping up on that particular program, which we view as being so important. And again, the Warrior Huddle, the idea behind that is that it is an advisory program where all students in our building are connected to another adult within this building who are not necessarily a classroom teacher, but somebody else that they can make that connection to, go to, have as a point person should they need. And then our third objective, again, embedded in our core values, is that respect for the diversity and dignity of individuals and cultures enriches learning and supports the development of responsible citizenship, and again, how many times do we continue to hear preparing our students for the 21st century, and yet we're in the second decade of the 21st century? So it really is embedding in everything that we do, those four Cs that are so important of collaboration, thinking critically, using creativity and communication, and really embedding those in our students, so that when they, when they do graduate, it's a part of their everyday life, and what they do in decision-making for a direction of career or a direction of college, and whichever way, whichever way they may go. And again, what can we do to help provide, well, our senior project is one of those pieces this year that we're so very excited about, adding courses along the way for our students where there can be an interest and might be an interest, and you'll be hearing more about some of those courses as our program of studies comes out, and also to work on embedding the skills in, in project-based learning, inquiry-based learning, where students are continuously needing to cooperate with each other, communicate with each other, and really putting to practice the things that we're expecting of them when they graduate. So I've really given it to you kind of in a thumbnail sketch, but it is really, it's what good education is all about, and what we want to continue to do for our students here at the high school.
You know, I, your discussion about the Warrior Huddle, will you be coming back to the committee to kind of give us an update on?
Sure.
I would love to hear, I mean, I, I think it's just such a wonderful program, I really do.
It'd be during the guidance.
Yeah, that would be, if, if possible, I mean, if, if you're ready at that time.
Yeah, maybe, but we may have some information that we can, we can get to at that point.
Okay, I also wanted to ask, I know in the past normally we put these online just for people at home, so is that something that you'll be?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, and I know you have a list of council members, and myself having been a former, Igo, council member, Anna Hearn, council member, I know there's a lot of people that, that help and contribute that goes into this, so.
Absolutely.
Would you like to read the names of your school council members?
I would be happy to. An ongoing community member, who has been a member for a number of years, and has just really been such a contributor, I think, to the school council for probably decades now, is Mr. Bruce Haynesworth, who is our community member, and then we do have our parent representatives of Joanne Bellana, and Karen Conley, and Marilyn Weiss, and then our teachers, Sarah Burns, who just was married, so Sarah Hamburger, who some people may know her better as, as of this fall, she was married, and Sue Hutchinson, who has been on for a number of years now, and she's gonna, going to be retiring at the end, I hope that, I don't know if that's public, but she may be moving on next year, excuse that, and Kathleen Porter has also been a member too, and then our student representatives this year, Brenna Lincoln and Frank Napoli, and I'm gonna say her name incorrectly, Wong Lin. So I have to thank all of them as well, they've just been incredible contributors, and always with a, a different eye to look in, and different contributions to be putting forth, so yes, thank you, I should have mentioned them to begin with.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments?
Just a, go ahead, just, no, please.
I just, I, it looks like a lot of work went into it, it was a very thorough school improvement plan, I enjoyed reading it, and I do look forward to hearing what you have to say about the Warrior Huddle, I, I think it's an interesting program, and I know, just reading the feedback that was in the newspaper in the Warrior Ward last week was, was interesting and enlightening, I, I thought generally it was very well-received, so I'll look forward to that report as well. Your turn, please.
I'm really interested in seeing how the senior project comes out, I-
Me too.
I'm like giddy, you know, and I think it's gonna be terrific, and it can only go up from there, right?
That's what we're hoping for.
To complement the senior project idea, and what we just voted on for senior tri- for school trips, is there anything, like, do the trips, can they complement somehow the senior project, or something like that, I don't know if it is, or if it's part of it, I'm-
Well, I'm gonna, I'll throw this out there, because it wasn't specifically put into here, but it's something that we're looking at, and so, not to commit us, but to still move us in that direction, is really taking a look at the possibility of a global citizen designation for some of our students, and there's more to come with that, I've been involved with some principals in some other schools that have really taken a look at this idea of what does it mean to be a, a citizen of the globe today, and a part of that is certainly travel and other experiences that students may well have, maybe it's even hosting an exchange student along the way, they may not do the travel, but it could be on the other part, so there could be some more information coming forward on that as we go along, over the next year, a year and a half on it.
Thank you.
And I just, can I just put a plug in, if there isn't anything else, in, in the school improvement plan, I do just want to thank everybody, oh, I have to thank, thank the department heads too, for their contributions to this improvement plan as well, but we had a fabulous, and I don't know, Mrs. Spinelli, if you were gonna mention it, a fabulous career day last week.
I'm gonna mention other matters, but let's talk about it now.
Okay, so.
Before people turn the channel.
Turn the channel. It was, absolutely.
No one's gonna turn the channel, Debbie.
You don't know.
Never know. So for everybody out there, it was an absolutely fabulous day, it's my first experience with it here at the high school, and it's been held every two years, and so this was the year, and our juniors and our seniors were able to choose from 25 or 30 different representatives of different types of careers- 25 or 30 different representatives of different types of careers. Everything from physical therapists to animal behaviorists to tattoo artists who kids flock to like you wouldn't believe.
They did.
Incredible, and the backgrounds that folks had about all of the above, to chefs, to you name it, we had it. And I think one of the overwhelming themes that we continued to hear, or at least I did, is because I was trying to bounce through all of the rooms to see everybody who was in, was you need to find a passion, you need to find something that you love, but you also need to continue to learn. You can't ever stop that process regardless of what it is. And for some folks, it was the first career for forever. For other folks, it was a second or a third career. And it was just, it was absolutely, it was just a fabulous, fabulous morning. And I know the feedback from the folks that I had spoken to, and Mrs. Spinelli has a connection to too, was just that they were so impressed with our students as well, you know, with how our students responded to them, the questions that were being asked, et cetera. So I just want to, again, say thank you to all the community members who were involved in that, to Ellen Pillsbury in the Guidance Department who really did work incredible hours to put that whole thing together and for our students.
Please, let's mention Ellen Pillsbury and all her, yes, her as the School Decreere Specialist, really put all of it together. But I have to compliment our kids because they really signed up for things they wanted to hear about, and they were, they were wonderful audiences and very interested and very mature. So I heard a lot of the presenters say what great kids we have here, including two that I may personally be related to or having given birth to perhaps. But I think, I think they were impressed because they, these kids were more mature than they remembered themselves being in high school, which is a great compliment to our student body. And I think also, I visited as many as I could, but I do think that there was a common theme among some of the sessions that I heard, which is follow your passion, and you don't have to be the top of your class, you don't have to be the best in school, you just have to do well enough to get yourself to the next spot in life and don't sell yourself short. So don't think you have to be at the top of your class to pursue the career or the passion that you want. You don't, you just have to have the drive and you have to work hard. And I think that a lot of them saying just work hard and keep going. And I thought that was a great message to all young children, young teenagers.
I think that goes hand in hand. If you love to do something, then you are going to want to work hard. And I think that's a great message. I always try to tell my kids the same thing about, try to find something that you love to do.
It was a great morning, very well coordinated. And we had people from technology, there was an impassioned science teacher who was wearing all the gear, oh, he was hilarious.
Playing the guitar, singing all the elements, I was under the different things that were going on that morning.
Mrs. Chaffrentier has kids sing the elements too, though, I just didn't want to.
I know.
I didn't want to, you know, I didn't want to disrespect our guests, but I was going to say my children can sing the elements too, which just happens to be to the Beach Boys' Copamo song, not the one that this science teacher. So anyhow, so kudos to our people who do some of those great things.
They do. Sure, again, thank you.
I think we need to accept.
Yes.
The school improvement plan. So we need a motion to accept the Foxborough High School school improvement plan.
I'll make a motion to accept the Foxborough High School school improvement plan. I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor? Four zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and your hard work. Now we have Mrs. Abrams.
Right, and it's Mrs. Abrams' turn. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. And I got a little preview of some of the things that we're doing on our school improvement plan from the Teaching and Learning Highlight. One of the things that we've done is the same as the high school and the elementary schools, we've organized our school improvement plan with the core values and the strategic plan objectives. So, under the core value of challenging and innovative educational experiences, promoting academic excellence by meeting the needs of students in ways that engage them in learning, and offering a curriculum that's rigorous and dynamic, I think that you see how Readers' Writers Workshop fits into that core value as well as fitting into all the others. As I was sitting here listening, I was thinking and watching the collaborative work, and I had a moment to reflect and say, well, this is collaborative work, that's a 21st century skill. It does that. It promotes, let's see, excuse me for looking, a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment. And that is one where we think of being kind to each other, so everybody is working together. It utilizes, it strengthens the respect for diversity. It really does everything, and it kind of mimics the work of the future. So as kids are learning, they are learning to be independent workers, they are learning to follow their interests and their passions, they're learning skills at the level that they can understand them and apply them on their own material. So each student is really working on their ELA goal. You can see in the plan, the state gives us our target data points, so they're all there, but basically, we want our students to be the best they can be as soon as they can be there and feel good about themselves. So in the area of ELA, Readers' Writers Workshop is something that we've worked very hard for, and it continues, as Sue Forrest said, following flexible grouping, and it's sort of a logical extension of our, looking at our data, collaborating as teacher teams, and implementing best practices in a way that we feel that will show results. So that was the ELA part. In math, we're continuing to, I feel, strengthen students' knowledge and foundations in math. And one of the things that we're doing this year is to add a mini-assessment, which is refining the formative assessment where we can sort of dipstick students, you know, during the term, not only individually in the classroom, walking around and observing what they're doing, on quizzes and tests, but on basic skills, previously taught skills in a mini-assessment. So the students take three or four times a quarter, just a six-problem little quiz, and the teacher can say, oops, we haven't really internalized that concept, so let's go back to that, and which students have and haven't. So that's how we're refining and continuing on our growth in math. In science, we're doing quite a few things, actually. We are not only looking at how we keep students' knowledge of the third and fourth grade science curriculum alive and fresh in grade five as we're teaching that, and the sixth and seventh science curriculum alive while we're teaching the grade eight. And don't worry, we'll get it all figured out. But we're also continuing the robotics program beyond the first Lego League competition, which is this Saturday, North Quincy High School, nine to five. We have our team, it's the first qualifying event. And we're also adding an engineering after-school club for students. We're working with some engineers, Engineer Your Futures. So we're adding more science STEM programs within the school day and also after school. And that is.
That's the program out of the Museum of Science, correct? Engineering Your Future. It comes from this museum.
There's two different ones that were.
Two different.
Yes. This is a different one.
A different one.
This is the competition.
This is the competition.
And you're talking about Engineering Adventures?
No, Engineering Your Future is also an acronym, a phrase that Museum of Science uses. Everybody's engineering a future or a world or something, but Engineering.
Adventures.
Your Future is a Museum of Science program.
I know the man's name.
As well as Engineering Adventures.
Right. Well, we're going to be engineering something.
But this is something different.
Whatever it is.
Somebody else's future.
Well, somebody else's future, but ours, to try to increase the opportunities.
Engineering your world.
Correct. To increase opportunities for kids to really pursue their mathematical side of their brain. In terms of the core value, a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment, continuing to strengthen the school culture, ensuring that student, staff, and stakeholders feel valued, safe, and have a voice. One of the things that we're doing this year is we're incorporating the School Climate Task Force that we had last year into our student council. And that will broaden our base of student leaders in terms of how people act towards each other. Another thing that we have done, which is a little subtle, but I think so far is effective in helping build students' self-esteem and positive acts towards each other because of feeling better, is incorporate the second step activities into the regular curriculum, allowing in grade seven and eight that 25 minutes to be extra help periods during the school day. So kids are more successful, feel better about themselves, and therefore are treating each other with a great deal more respect. That's on page five. An additional thing that we're doing is having a program in January, and this is a plug. Katie Greer is coming. She went to Mansfield and worked for Mansfield Public Schools over two days, and the Mansfield PAC invited Foxborough family, so we sent out blurbs, and some of the parents went and really thought it was very, very useful.
She's a national speaker, just to give you a look, she's a national speaker on.
On how do we keep our kids safe in this technology-driven world? So she'll be coming to the middle school and the high school on January 21st, and she will be speaking to parents on the evening of the 21st, mark your calendars, we just don't know which place. The high school has a larger auditorium, but they have many more events. The middle school can seat 487, so we can assess our audience and have Katie come. And I think that for the internet safety, as students often receive technology gifts over the holiday break that's upcoming, we like to address the safe use of it in the month of January so that they can learn how to use it appropriately. And we are going to be looking at our recognition programs at all grade levels with the school council for the respect for the diversity and dignity of individuals and preparing students for the 21st century. We are increasing our use of technology. We're using staff development. We started last spring with allowing students to bring their own devices to school, to kind of put our toes in the water to see how did that affect, help, hurt the classroom environment? Kids were fine, teachers were fine, worked out well. This year, we are embarking on adding wireless, which we may have by the beginning of the year. Students have already signed permission slips to bring in their devices, and we have set up in the grade eight group space, group spaces, a really kind of a nice library-type environment. It's in progress. We have some beautiful tables Mr. Utna got for us, and we've ordered some chairs. The kids are kind of excited, they're sitting down at them, they're touching the wood and the inlay. We had them vote on the chairs, we had them sit in different chairs.
We get a lot of free tables, but aren't they beautiful?
They are beautiful, yeah. They were free, but they are beautiful. And kids are respecting them and they feel important, so we'll be starting there. And we hope it's a place where students can work together and they can come out of the classroom, working groups during the classroom, during the 20 minutes, and prepare themselves for the freedom that they will find in high school, because with freedom comes responsibility. Another thing that we're doing in terms of technology is participating in the Hour of Code, that's Computer Science Education Week, December 9th through 15th. I brought it to the teachers, and already two of the teachers had signed their students up, so all of the Ahern students will be participating in an hour of code. I will leave this information for you in either their art or computer classes during that week. And there's a lot of tutorials, there's some information where people can learn how to critically think by working on these computer programs on computer code. And that's CSEDweek.org, CSEDweek.org. It has some nice information and some fun things for kids to do. And again, ensuring equality education cultivated by ongoing communication and shared resources and maintaining strong support for public education, one of the things that we've tried to do is reach out to parents a little bit more. I think Katie Greer is a big reach because I think many parents are interested in learning about how to keep their kids safe in this high-tech world. And we've already done a couple of nights for parents. We had a grade six through eight math night to introduce our new math program and the online resources. And then we had a grade seven writing night. So in these small venues, you know, to bring parents in, and we've gotten some positive response from that, and of course, you know, we get some more volunteers. So, you know, bringing parents participating into the building as well as they are participating greatly with students with their homework at home through Power School emails and other communication devices. So each step is a little step towards, you know, everybody coming together and helping the kids be the best that they can be and feel good about themselves, especially at that middle school age, which always has a few little bumps to it. I do want to thank the parent representatives, school representatives, and community representatives. Lorraine Grant has been a community representative, and she left and made a space for Mike Weber to join us on, as a community rep with some free technology advice. Parent representatives, Jeff Ames, thanks to Kristin Katie, who is no longer a representative because her child is no longer in the middle school. Linda Leary is a representative currently. Michelle Gardner is a current representative, and Cheryl Moran also left with her child. Tom Gill and Colin Vogel-Gossang, who having been on the school council for a number of years, gave their spaces to Noah Li and Maureen Brawley. And Julie Grant is a teacher representative. So we have a diverse group of people spread over multiple grades and many disciplines, parents who have a great deal to offer us. And I'm thrilled with the people that we have working for our students. And I have just one more plug for the Ahern Play, which is Friday night, 7:00 PM, Have I Got News For You? That's the title. And Saturday at 2:00 PM. So if you're interested in going to a show, it'll be a nice show. If you're interested in robotics, North Quincy High School, nine to five. And there's something for everybody to do this weekend in the middle school.
Sue, thank you. You know, I know we need to motion for this, but I just want to say, I mean, we heard from the elementary schools, we've heard from the middle school and the high school, the work that people, students, teachers, community representatives, it's just so impressive. And I think, you know, I want these to get up online so that people see what is going on in the classes, what's going on after school, and there is so much here, there is so much good work going on. And I just think we should just be so proud of the work that's gone into these improvement plans. I'm really impressed by them.
And last time, we saw a lot of consistency in alignment with the strategic plan, and now you see even more.
Yes.
And while they each have their own flavor, what's going on at the school, you do see consistencies across the school improvement plans as well. So kudos to how well the team works together, really administratively, they're great.
There's so much initiative going on, so much initiative and creativity, and really trying to think out of the box and use not only the internal resources, which we saw today, you know, at the beginning, but also looking at external resources like these individuals you're bringing in to provide information to the community and to parents and.
A lot of positive energy. I give them all the credit.
I don't know if anybody else has any other comments?
I just wanted to thank, before we make our motion, I wanted to thank Sue for being, bringing Katie Greer here and working with the high school to get her here, because I didn't have the opportunity to go see her in Mansfield, but I know several parents who did, who felt very, very strongly that she would be a really good person to speak to our children and to our parents, and that this is going to be a very important program.
Amy's seen her before in other.
In Plainville as well.
So thank you for getting right on that and getting her here in January, because I think the sooner the better with safety and digital safety, so. That's good. I'd be happy to make a motion that we accept the John J. Ahern Middle School School Improvement Plan as presented.
Any second?
I second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Right.
Four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great job, everybody. Thanks, thanks for being here.
Yes, thank you. Yes, for the support.
You never know, they might have needed help.
We're going to move on to FPS Technology Plan Update, Ms. Spinelli.
Yes, so as you know, we came to the committee with the very first rawish draft in September, beginning of September, of our newly rolled-out Foxborough Public Schools Technology Plan. And as you remember, it was a much more comprehensive plan than we'd had in place before, which is kind of a plan that had been limited to infrastructure and all of that. But we really wanted to be able But we really wanted to be able to better capture where we're really trying to go with technology for teaching and learning purposes, as well as put the typical techie stuff involved. So since we were here in September, we met with, and when I say we, Bill, Yugna, Amy Burdos, Paul Borladi, and I met with four community technology experts to, who volunteered their time very generously just to give us their feedback on the plan. And that was Steve Conley, Peter Proctor, Christine Lathrop, and Mike Tedescucci. So they were, actually, we had a really good meeting with them, and they asked a lot of good questions. And they are certainly techie tech experts. So you do, we do envision staying engaged with them along the way and got a lot out of that night. So we want to thank them for their time and their contributions. In addition, the draft plan was reviewed by our entire administrative team over a couple of meetings. And Amy and Paul presented to the district's Technology Steering Committee and Amy to the Professional Development Committee. So we've really received feedback from four different groups. And as a result, Amy and I revised the plan in several areas so that we could have more clarity and cohesiveness. So we got some really good tips, like, you know, all of the, the places we were drawing information from, whether it was the National Technology Plan, whether it was the COSN documents, whether it was our own technology leadership study, if you will, last, that we spent last year on what is our role in technology leadership as school administrators. So they had really good suggestions, like you might want to link, better link the themes that you're talking about with the waves of technology acquisition and use. So we went back and did that. Those are really good suggestions to help the reader make those connections in a little more explicit way. And also to revisit our timelines. So a lot of our timelines are long. We realize that. We filled it as much as we could. This plan is never going to be complete as in done, and we can't cross another T. So we, we're, we're close enough that this is the plan we're implementing this year and that we will be evaluating this year. So we acknowledge some parts of the plan is still a work in progress, but we think at this point, we really have a pretty good viable working document. So we thought we'd provide that for you so that you have the latest version that we are going to just call it a day at this point and work with this version. We do consider it a living document, so every year we're going to be revisiting it.
With technology, it has to be a living document.
Changes by the time you go to sleep and wake up the next day. The one thing we are doing that I think is, is really exciting is that at the MasQ Conference in October, which was here at Gillette, the statewide conference of superintendents and the MasQ organization, which is Massachusetts computer-using educators. So they have a joint conference every fall. And we went to a workshop on the MasQ evaluators, which is actually a team that MasQ supports, that they train district administrators and personnel and teachers in how to, I'll read it right off their thing. It's a professional development activity that engages district teams around the development of program evaluations about instructional technology initiatives. So they actually will come in and train your team on if this is your plan or this is your initiative, how do you establish indicators to measure those? So it really then could be applicable to measuring any initiative or, or coming back to evaluate your success and your progress. So that's certainly an area that we are interested in growing and learning a little bit more. So we've now got this huge new tech plan. How are we going to assure ourselves, never mind the public and the committee, that we are measuring the things we said we do? So we are, we have signed ourselves up for that. And there's a, it's like any professional development activity, we'll be paying them to come and work with our team. We do expect to have about 10 people involved, which is our, our four in central office, an elementary principal, a secondary principal, an elementary teacher, a middle school teacher, a high school teacher, and one, our technology integration specialist. And we're going to get started in January. So it's four full days, where three days of training and, and how are we going to collect those indicators? What are our indicators and how are we going to collect data? Then we go off and engage in data collection, and then we come back in April with plan. So it should take us about four months. And then it will, we'll have more tools in our toolkit about how to evaluate any technology initiative or our whole plan. For us, we're going to tackle the whole plan, but anytime in the future we're trying to evaluate an initiative, this will give us a structure for, for doing that, so.
So will you identify those indicators in January through this?
We'll identify them over the course of the three first full days, which will be January, February.
Okay. And then in April, you'll evaluate those indicators?
We'll have a plan. We'll collect data and see where we are. And then we'll probably, now, once we're trained, we'll repeat that process each year. What do we want to measure now? Because some of these things won't be ready to measure right away, and some will be. So we'll have much more training in how to go about program evaluation in terms of a research methodology that is transferable to any other initiative. So we're pretty excited about, about doing that. So it was something we attended, and actually, we talked to him right after, and I just said, where do we sign up? Because this is something that's, they'll be really good for us so that we don't just say we have a plan. We think we're doing okay. We're actually going to have a methodology for measuring our progress in a huge plan like this. So-
That's awesome.
We're in. We're starting, I think, on Tuesday, January 7th.
Okay.
We have our first day. So they have all kinds of things about what do you identify as measurable? And how do you think you're going to measure it? And how do you go about doing all of that? So it's, it's quite, this is our second year. They did offer it to school districts last year and learned a lot from those districts who participated, which was quite a bit. So what are we claiming we're going to do in the plan? What are indicators going to be and how will we be able to measure that? So that's our next step.
Okay. Very impressive. Does anyone have any questions about the plan for the team? Well, I think it's great. I, I'm really excited about this seminar.
Me too.
Because I think, you know, it's, what's key is what you identify in terms of, in terms of the indicators.
And I think, I mean, I know what your impression, but I, my impression was if we go through this training process, we'll also be better at writing a plan in the future because we will know better how, what, if our central claims are even measurable or if where the direction we're trying to go is measurable or, or worth spending time on. So I think that's-
Will you come back and then give us an update on?
Well, we have an update on this, I think, in February, I think it is. That, oh, let me look. You know, our, our shared goals? So one of our shared goals, let me just see, I'll keep it written here, is to-
Is it February?
Oh, here it is. Well, we said we'd provide an update in the fall, and then in, around May, we said spring.
Okay.
So this is, this is December, so here's your, here's your update. But, but I think, I think it would be, I put May question mark on my page because I think we would like to complete that process with MasQ evaluators in April. And then in May, before we get too close in the year, come back and tell you where we are and what we learned, what we learned about our plan and what we learned about our methodology through that. So I'm shooting for May if, if that sounds good.
That sounds good. That sounds perfect timing.
If you want to give any-
No, I just think that the, a number of things, kind of going back to the plan with community members. It was, it was really helpful because they come from, you know, IT, big picture. And I think it really kind of solidified some of the things that we already had. So it made us feel good about the track that we were on. And then with the MasQ evaluators, it's going to help us in those points that Debbie was saying as far as what, what and how do we go about measuring? I mean, we think in particular areas, when we look at the technology that we're, whether it's purchasing or how it's being integrated, but it can be difficult to measure as far as how that is being implemented. And to have that process will be a helpful tool for us.
Great. Okay. We look forward to hearing them back after all of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to Educator Evaluation Update, Ms. Benelli.
Yes. If you've been reading the Boston Globe or any other of the media outlets, you see that the Department of Education has started to release some results of educator evaluation ratings. And it's the first time that educator evaluation ratings of any kind have been made public. So this is definitely a new venture into public education in the state of Massachusetts and across the country. Some other states started this last year with the public ratings. So I, what I included for you is the press release from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The press release is called First Year of Educator Evaluation Ratings Show the Majority of Teachers in Massachusetts Are Performing at High Levels. So it outlined that in the state of Massachusetts, in race to the top districts, who were required to implement this system last year, and we are one of those, 60% of Massachusetts educators in those races in the top districts were evaluated last year using the new educator evaluation model. The Department of Ed required 50% in individual districts, so they're 60% statewide. They met the goal, you know, collectively or in the aggregate, I would say. But while we were required to report 50, and the state reported 60 altogether, really happy to report that 98.9% of Foxborough educators were evaluated last year. And the only reason we weren't 100, I have to say, because we're all about being right out there with everything. The only reason we weren't 100 is because when we went to report all the ed eval ratings in August, which was their data collection point, we discovered that they had just made a new rule that if you have a long-term substitute teacher that's in a classroom or a position greater than 90 days, so if you have somebody out on a medical maternity leave and it happens to go longer than 90 days, that they are now going to require that those people be evaluated for that three-month period or whatever, the four-month period, as a full-time permanent teacher would be. So that was not known to us last year. So long-term substitutes were not rated with the new evaluation system because that was news to us in August when our data came back not 100%. It took us a long time to be calling and using, I want to thank Erica Scanell, our data person. Just all of us collectively working on this, these ratings and the submission of it and asking questions, then we found out that that's what they had decided. So going forward, we'll know that. And so we had three long-term subs last year in assignments greater than 90 days. And we didn't evaluate them using the new model because it just-
You weren't aware of it.
We were unaware of it, and it didn't seem like you're going to establish goals. You're going to have a mid-cycle review, and you're going to have a summative. All in that, say, three-to-four-month period is what's going to have to happen. So not knowing that, we didn't do it. So except for those three long-term subs, everybody was evaluated.
Wow. That's impressive. Yes, that's wonderful.
So I would like to acknowledge the hard work of principals, assistant principals, and department heads in meeting that challenging goal, and honestly, our teachers because they have such dedication to high professional standards and they are so willing to learn together and learn alongside their colleagues. And we worked out all the glitches throughout the year, and not that there weren't any because there always are with something that big. And we learned from them as well, so I want to thank them. So you will see when these ratings become public that our ratings in the aggregate will be in there. So for example, if a particular group has fewer than five in it, five or fewer. Let me just look that up if five is included. They won't report that because then individuals become identifiable, for example. So I'm only one superintendent. You're not going to see my ratings publicly in there because I'm a group of one. You wouldn't see Amy's in there. However, administrators as a whole are grouped together. So they'll separate, all of us are considered, we are all considered educators. So you'll see that it will say all educators, which includes all of us. And then it will say all teachers, and non-teachers would be administrators and other people. So we, we had to actually look up, I had to have our data person look up because it, we're listed as having 28 administrators. So in our administrator group, there are 28 people. I'm thinking, 28 people? So we had to go back and see who's tagged as an administrator. So we did confirm with, through our data submission and through a PowerPoint that I went to actually about educator evaluation recently, is that they, they have a whole bunch of categories that are considered administrators. So I'll tell you who they are. So for us, they are principals, assistant principals, central office administrators, department heads, curriculum coordinators, anyone in a coordination type of role. And so that does add up to 28 here because it also includes our special ed facilitators. If you're a team facilitator, that person would be included. So pretty much it does add up to 28. We have, we have about 14 department heads and curriculum coordinator people. And we have nine principals or assistant principals, and then central office people. So that's really the three groups. 14, nine, and then the rest of us. So we have a list of who, who is tagged, because they have field codes depending on your role in the district. So everybody is coded. So we just have, we just had to extract who is coded as a non-teacher. And that includes, you know, our early childhood coordinator who only works, she teaches half-time, and she's early childhood coordinator, and she has to be evaluated as an administrator. So she's included, and anybody else in that type of category would be included. So, so you will see when the, when the ratings become public. If you're wondering who the 28 administrators are, I just wanted to tell you because it does sound like, what are we doing with 28 administrators? But it really does include anybody who functions even part of their time in a non-teaching capacity. That's really what it means. So we have-
That's good clarification for the public.
Yes. And of all the race to the top districts, of which that's the majority in Massachusetts, there were really only 17 districts, us being one of the 17, who approached 100%. So greater than 95%, greater than or equal to 95%, there were only 17 school districts. So I think we did well-
Yes.
-for our first year in terms of getting all of that done. And we have, we are really learning from the process all the way around, so. So that's it.
Okay. Thank you for that update.
And I did include for you, I think, in addition to the memo, at the end, you can see Foxborough, the last page.
Yes, yes, you did.
So that's a summary of Foxborough data that was put in.
Do they have that, do they have a summary of, across the state of what has been done like this?
Well, they, I took that from your first page, and compared to the state, we were 80, the state's-
I have every district in, in here.
Am I correct in my, it's statewide, it was 85.2% that were percent proficient with all educators?
Uh, I have to look.
I think you said that in your front page.
60% were, you know what? It could be in the, it could be in the press release. So there were a couple of things that I highlighted in the, in the-
So I, what I found was 85.2 statewide percent proficient, and we have 95.8% compared to the state.
That's possible. Yes.
And compared to the percentage that, of needs improvement, 6.8% statewide, and we had 2.4.
Yeah. I think actually the press release had some interesting points, one of which was from the Education Secretary, Matt Malone, who said, "Our students are leading, our students are leading the nation in reading and mathematics achievement," as we heard through the NAP study. "So it's not surprising that we also have some of the best teachers in the country because we're achieving it pretty high." And then the president of the Mass Teachers Association said, "As we continue to roll out this new system, people should not draw conclusions about relative school quality based on these results since professional judgment and local context will inevitably lead to some differences in how administrators apply the new ratings. The goal of evaluation is to help identify educators' strengths and weaknesses so that we can improve teaching and learning in all schools." And I thought that really captured what the intent is of the new system, that we do wholeheartedly agree with.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. We will move on to overnight parking on school property in winter.
Yes. You may have read in last week's reporter that the police chief, as he does every year, asked the town to ban overnight parking on roadways and on public parking lots and so that they can plow more easily if we were to get a snowstorm. So that has, that takes, that took place yesterday, went into effect yesterday, December 1st, as they always do. And each year, the, the chief asks the school committee's support in also taking a vote to not allow parking, overnight parking on school property. It's not so much of an issue for us. For example, if, if somebody near a school leaves a car overnight and during the summer, that does happen. But when it's in winter, we really have to enforce it because otherwise, when the DPW gets out there to plow, it's really a detriment to the efficiency of their operation. And, and it results in unsafe lots for us once, once we do open. So that he would like a motion for the school committee to approve the overnight parking ban on school property during the winter.
And when does the winter end officially? Do we have a ending?
I do not know.
Oh.
Usually March 20th is the first day of spring.
I think you're right. Give me a date.
If you own my snow blower, it never ends because I can never get the snow started.
Last winter, we had snow all the way through March.
We did. But I, I think it, I think Joe's right. Probably knew the end of March.
Okay. We can always clarify that with the, with the chief. So do I have a motion?
A motion that we accept, accept the, the ordinance for the winter as written and presented. Thank you.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I know many, an exchange teacher has parked in my driveway for the 10 days they're away in February.
Because they can't, that's true, because they can't be-
They can't be here.
They can't be in the school parking lot.
Okay. Then we're going to move to other matters. I have, I have one. Good. Maybe I'll start with mine. You know, at the last meeting, we talked about the Rossino proposal, and the committee had asked me to contact Mark Sullivan, which I did, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. And I don't have a lot of information to report back, except to say that what I was informed by him was that the mitigation package was not, for lack of a better word, offered to the Board of Selectmen in terms of any kind of mitigation regarding the proposal. And he did not know of any for the school. So what he did tell me was that there is a formal report that's come out from the Rossino group. Rossino group. And I, you know, because of the holiday, I did contact the town hall. They are going to send it to me electronically. Once I receive it, I will send it to Debbie or to Janet and have them send it out to the rest of the committee. And then you can all take, I think it's lengthy, so I think you, you know, you can find the sections that are applicable to us and then discuss it, please, and then we can talk about it at our next meeting under other matters. And then we can just move, you know, decide if we want to move from there about, there's needs more discussion, unless, and I'm certainly open to what other people, any other requests or information about it. That's all I have at this time. So, this Rossino committee, is it directed towards residents in Plainville? They, no. This, this was a committee that was established by the Board of Selectmen, a subcommittee, for lack of a better word. And they. Our Board of Selectmen. Our Board of Selectmen. And they issued a report based on the proposal. I haven't read it, so I don't know all the details in it. But I don't know of any information specific to any mitigation to the town or to the school based on this proposed Rossino. If anybody has any other information, maybe that they've, you know, received in the meantime since our last meeting, certainly, we'll have to hear it. If not, we'll just move forward with, I think, just reading the report. And obviously, that'll be the information, and then we can, we can discuss it.
Katie, do you think if we have any questions on the report, it would be possible to invite the authors of the report to come and discuss that with us at a meeting? If that were to occur.
Yes, absolutely. I think we should all get, you know, have a chance to look it over, and absolutely, if we want some more information.
Yes, we'll just have to wait and see what's in it.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, I don't know of any timeline, and I know that was the other issue, the other question that was brought up. Other than that, the report is issued, and that's, that's what I know. It's. You're waiting to receive it? Yes. Electronically, yes. Okay. Anything else under that? Steve, do you have anything?
Only, only that if it goes under other matters, and this is my naivete, okay?
Okay, sure.
If it goes, and I'll need clarification on this, out of the meeting, if it goes under other matters, is it then a non-expected item and therefore has to be put somewhere else? In other words, I think other matters in the rulebook or the, you know, the OML is for unanticipated issues. I could be wrong. I just want to make sure that we, as a board, are operating properly with wherever we place this discussion, should we have a future discussion. Does that make sense?
And you're questioning whether we're placing it appropriately?
I just want to, I just want to make sure that we place it appropriately within the bounds of OML.
Sure. No, well, certainly we want to adhere to that.
It feels like a minefield when I wake up in the morning with OML on my head, you know? It's a bit of a step.
Well, I think, I think you have to decide if you're going to put it on as an agenda item first.
Yeah.
And I don't hear the, so I think, let's take one step at a time. I'm just looking up to see if there's anything in that under agenda.
I can clarify that too with mask, you know, just to be.
So, you wait for the report and we'll wait for the distribution of it?
Yes.
Thank you.
It says, "Agenda reflects what is likely to be discussed."
Right. So, might fit that criteria. We'll see.
Okay. Oh, okay. Oh, is that like a, is that the handbook?
That's a PowerPoint, I think, from.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
I just carry it around. It's, it's helpful, right, Champ? That's why she always asks, "Why do I have so much stuff stuck in there?" It's like you never know when you're going to need it. So, I have our goals in there. I have the.
It's the Swiss Army knife of running a school district.
School committee roles and responsibilities orientation that they gave out at the MISC conference, it just went right in here. Why not put it where you can find it?
That's awesome.
But I, I think that, I think the next step is really to, to decide if you're going to put it on as an agenda item. So, I, I don't know if it's at the next meeting, because I think if, if anything, you should have a conversation at the next meeting because you can't, you're going to read the report, but you can't deliberate about the report.
That's right.
So, I think, I think under other matters at the next meeting, you should deliberate about whether you want it as an agenda item, and then put it on as an agenda item. I think you have a two-step process here. Can't go wrong with a two-step process.
Well, it could also be included under informational matters. I mean, like in the, in terms of the, it couldn't be distributed to, I don't know if everybody has access to, you know.
We'll be happy to send it out to you. If you send it to us, we'll forward it right away.
All right. So, that'd be our plan, then?
Sounds great.
Moving forward? Okay. Just so we're clear, our plan is the reports will go out to everyone. Once you receive them and send them to Janet. And then, under other matters, we will discuss whether we want to put it on the agenda. We'll make a final decision about that. How's that?
Okay.
Steve, is that, how's that?
Terrific.
Okay. All right. We'll do that then.
Thank you.
Anyone else have other matters?
The, I forwarded you an email, the AdCom would like to change their night for the hearing, the school, the school budget hearing to February 12th, and I just asked you to get back to us as to whether you could accommodate that so I can get back to Randy about that.
What date does that fall on?
It's a.
It's a Wednesday.
Wednesday, just before the school vacation week.
Oh, okay.
Our original date, somebody on the AdCom or a few people can't be there, they're trying to change their schedule on to accommodate some unanticipated things when they first made the timeline, so.
What was the original date? Do we know?
The 5th.
February 5th? Oh, yes.
Bruce, I had the date. It was February 5th. Usually the first Wednesday in February.
Okay. So, they're delaying it by a week because somebody's got something going on.
Um, does anybody have a, oh, wait a minute.
I heard from Bruce, he can make that date.
I'm not sure that I can because of the switch. I'm sorry. Okay.
I have no problem with it.
You got my affirmative, right?
Mm-hmm. Oh, yes, thank you.
Okay. So, that's at least three out of five. Is that vacation?
No, it's not. It's the week before vacation week.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm.
So, I'm, they're waiting for me to say, they know we're waiting for me to get your input tonight.
Okay.
Waiting for me to say, "Okay, we accept the change of date" because.
Yeah, I think that should be fine.
Okay. Yes.
And theirs could change as well, right? I mean, some, sometimes this is a moving.
Oh, you mean this is going to change again?
Well, I hope not. I mean.
I hope not too, but I mean, we've been.
The moving date has been a little problematic in the past, so I'm, I'm hoping that doesn't.
At that point, that's the last budget they look at. And, I mean, they're going to have to get their, you know, their votes taken and the, you know, the schedule is pretty tight.
He's right though. One, one time we were delayed till March, just saying, but that's not going to happen this time.
Okay. I'm sure. That's unusual. That's exceptional.
That was an exception. And then the high school had an open house of seventh and eighth grade parents that I've heard lots of positive things, very.
Steve and I were both there. It was fabulous. I thought Diana did a great job, and I would love to thank all the department heads and captains of teams and student council members and vice assistant principals who are all there to answer questions, and got a lot of wonderful feedback from everybody I talked to about it. So, I'm excited.
Me too.
My son's excited.
We had a great student volunteer guide. She took us everywhere, places I didn't even know we had an ice cream shop.
So, I heard two.
And they all looked terrific.
Bruce went as well and said that it was very impressive. And I heard from somebody else who said they were very impressed, Stu Yugna and the building committee, with the high school, how it came out, that clearly this is the original high school, and you can still see that, but just thought, having been in a lot of school buildings, said it was, it was just impressive. It's clean, it's neat, great value for the dollar and the renovation, and people were really happy. People aren't in high school yet and haven't had a chance necessarily to engage in it, said that it was just, the building looks beautiful. So, I also want to thank our custodial staff and maintenance staff who really keep it up really well because the place is usually pretty sparkly. Right?
Yeah, definitely.
And the kids have a lot of pride. So, sometimes you hear that.
A lot of students here love the custodians. I talk to some of them all the time, so.
Some of them what?
I talk to some of the custodians all the time.
Yes.
They're pretty great. They're amazing people.
Yes. And our, our kids are so respectful, and they do their part, so.
Yes.
Go all the way around. So, a lot of positives.
Awesome. Nice to hear. Anything else?
I have. No?
Look at that, right on the money.
Great.
I, I have one more thing.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I always have a lot to say, but the Bit Auction was last Friday as well, and I saw Steve there as well, and it was, it was fabulous. The, the PTO from the borough was the organizers, and they did Willy Wonka theme, and they just did a great job. And kudos to everyone who's involved.